Ready to be held on Monday, April 4, 2016 at 7:00 PM when the City Council chambers will come to order. Would you stand with us, please, for the invocation by Reverend Matt Johnson, Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church?
Our Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for your many blessings, your mercy and your grace that you bestow upon us every day. Lord, thank you for the freedom and the liberty we have to assemble together in a place like this. Collectively, we ask that you bless those that lead us, Lord, give them wisdom. Lord, I pray that you just magnify their character. Lord, and for us, that our citizens, Lord, I pray that we would live and submit to authority in a way that brings your name glory every day. Lord, thank you for all that you do for us each day, the blessings that are innumerable. We pray these things this evening in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Johnson. We appreciate those that come and do the invocations for us at our meetings. Roll call, please, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Eppsier.
Here.
We do have a forum.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we will move to citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, we will move to the proclamations and awards. At this time, I will present a proclamation to Airport Manager Mike Smith and Lance Donzie, who is Chairman of the Airport Board, and if you gentlemen will meet me at the podium, please. Whereas the city of Popper Bluff and the state of Missouri has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Popper Bluff Municipal Airport have an immense economic impact on the city of Popper Bluff, and whereas Missouri is home to 115 public-use general aviation airports, which serve 9,087 pilots and 3,953 active general aviation aircraft, and whereas Missouri is home to 95 fixed base operators, 55 repair stations, 547 heliports of six FAA-approved pilot schools, 1,732 flight students, and 1,610 flight instructors. And whereas general aviation airports in Missouri support an economic impact of over 857 million annually, and whereas general aviation not only supports Missouri's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and congressional oversight should be in place to ensure stable funding of this system. Now therefore, I bid ye abashir mayor of the city of Popper Bluff to hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the city of Popper Bluff and declare April 2016 as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the city of Popper Bluff. Further, the city clerk of the city of Popper Bluff is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this proclamation and to further cause it to be forever preserved in the official records of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to be fixed this fourth day of April, 2016. We also want to thank you all for the good job that you do out at the airport. We have a great airport, and we appreciate everything you've done to make it such. Item A, the City Council will review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one between the city of Popper Bluff and Schultz Surveying and Engineering Incorporated relative to engineering services for Project STP 51009 for the paving of various city streets. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a project we've been working on through MoDOT, various streets, actually means South 11th Street and Thomas Street, which is down in the first ward. The supplemental agreement is relative to the engineering services contract with Schultz Surveying and Engineering for the design and paving of these streets. Basically, we're just extending the timeline on this. The new timeline is review of comments, letter responses, changes, and final plans and specs based on comments letters, April 1st, preparation of plans and specs for bidding, April 15th, bid opening date, May 20th, bid award date, June 8th, and pre-construction meeting on June 22nd. So hopefully, those two streets would be done sometime this summer, and we're just extending the timeline on this.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the audience or the council?
Make the motion, send item A to the voting session to be held tonight.
Motion has been made and seconded to move item A to the voting session tonight. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will review a proposed ordinance adopting a voluntary flood buyout policy for the city of Popper Bluff relative to the fiscal year 2011 Community Development Block Grant Program Disaster Recovery Funding. Mr. Matt Winters, name and address, Matt, please.
Matt Winters, I'm with the Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission, address is 319 Fair Street. Back in January, I was here, and you approved the submission of a community development block grant for a flood buyout program that's down around the Hillcrest Park area, about 20 something houses. The application is being reviewed right now, and as part of the review process, they've asked the city to adopt a flood buyout policy to kind of guide and direct the process as it goes through after the, if the grant is funded. Worked with Dennis, and we found one that y'all had done prior, and it's pretty much the same. I did send it to the folks in Jefferson City to review it. I got one copy to Pam last week, and they came back this morning and asked for a couple changes, and she had given you a copy with the, just some minor revisions. On that first page, the very top items, one and two, they added the word "primary." You can see everything that's added is underlined, and then a couple things that were deleted were marked out. On page three, under the fair market value determination, paragraph five, you can see what's been underlined has been added, and like I said, what's been marked out was the original wording that's been deleted. And then on page five, at the top of page five, that first full paragraph, you can see there's been some, just some clarification added of who would review receipts and things like that. And then on page six, the post-flood owner purchase section has been completely removed. And then down towards the bottom, replacement housing payment, that item number three, just sign us some clarification. It says that a decent, safe, and sanitary unit, and they're just clarifying where that definition for decent, safe, and sanitary unit would come from, from the Uniform Relocation Act that HUD has in place. That was just a few, like I said, just a few minor changes that they asked to be made before it was...
Comments or questions from the audience or the council?
It says here, you can only be one acre or less in buyout, first general buyout, number one, resident buyout, no more than one acre or less.
Per parcel, yeah.
Parcels, more than acre. Can't do it there, no.
We can change that before you adopt it. The grant hasn't even been approved yet, so if there are things in here that you want to change, there's plenty of time to do that.
Probably not verminy, lost their acre.
You know of any properties?
I don't think any of them are over an acre, are they, Dennis? No? None of those that are going to be involved are over an acre.
I just read it, because you may get one acre and a quarter, and you're in the middle of a buyout, and then you couldn't do that.
And this would just apply to this specific project. If there was another buyout done later under different funding sources, then it would, you'd have to do another policy to guide that buyout.
An acre should be enough for this.
Should be on this one, yes.
I just didn't want to get caught somewhere where you had an acre and a quarter.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
About your project. Thank you.
Do we need a motion, or just a consensus?
April the 18th.
Make a motion, we'll move it to the voting session on the 18th.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move item B to the voting session for April 18th. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, thank you, Matt. Item C, the City Council will discuss an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 645, entitled Taxi Cabs to Include Limousine Services and Their Requirements. Mr. Massingham and Ms. Kirby.
I think Ms. Kirby was going to address this on the taxi cabs.
I copy our section in the code that, Chapter 645, that deals with taxi cabs. We have not had a limousine service, per se, in the community for about 12 to 15 years. We have not had any guidelines to go by, so this is just setting out a format for us in the office, so it can be consistent. I did a multi-search on codes throughout the state, and most of them use whatever guidelines you have set up for taxi cabs, so that's what we're trying to do as well. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
I'd like to see in that that the person doing the driving or operating the limousine have to have a background check.
They do. We require it on taxi cab drivers, and so we would require that also of limousine drivers.
You don't guess.
Yes.
You never know nowadays.
No, I agree.
You know what I'm saying? So it's in there. Thank you.
They have to have a chauffeur's license for a taxi.
They do have to have a chauffeur's license. So, again, it's in our code, whatever is required. The only difference is taxi cabs, they have to have a minimum of two, a maximum of six. If they have more than six, the city manager has to approve it, so there wouldn't be a minimum requirement for limousines. Other than that, it's pretty much identical to what we require from taxi cabs.
Make a motion, move this item to the voting session on the 18th.
Second.
Has been motioned and seconded to move item C to the voting session to be held April 18th. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D, the City Council will discuss the issuance of a liquor license to Hydro Adventures LLC located at 2801 Cheshire Boulevard, Popper Bluff, Missouri. Ms. Kirby.
You get it. Hydro Adventures, the water park down in South Popper Bluff, they've requested two liquor licenses for two separate buildings at their facility. It's my understanding they won't be allowed to carry liquor or anything out of those buildings, they'll be confined to those two different areas. There's also representatives here from the water park, if y'all have any questions for them.
I believe it is by state law, they have to maintain it within the area, it's not going to be in...
It has to be in a permanent structure, correct?
Correct.
And we just need a verbal approval on this from the council, it doesn't have to be an ordinance or anything.
Okay. How to prove it?
Comments or questions from the audience? Others from the council?
It's going to be sort of kid-proof, and there's a lot of kids down there, so basically I say it's going to be kid-proof, so they can't...
I think it's for...
Where's the gentleman at for the water park? Can you step up there?
It's actually away from...
Just for clarity... Would you come to the podium, please, and give us your name and address? Thank you.
My name is Barrett Byers, I'm at 115 Calley Lane, Popper Bluff.
This is just for clarity, I think you guys just want to open up a building so you can have like receptions and meetings and...
We do have an upstairs catering room, it has a bar built into it, I think a previous owner may have planned to get a liquor license at one point. We want to open that up for caterings and birthday parties, things like that. We're also doing an expansion to the water park, where we're adding on to the expansion that we did last year, we added five rides last year. We're going to continue that expansion down, and in that area will be a building that's already been there, we refer to it as Building B, and we'd like to turn that area into an inside bar that has a little outside patio where people can take their beverages. Of course, it would all be fenced in, I've worked at water parks before that have had alcohol, and understand the issues that come along with it, and are willing to, you know, to meet all those things. Some of the layers of control that we're going to have, each alcoholic beverage will be in a certain color cup, so that it's recognizable from, you know, many feet away. We're going to also card, obviously card each adult and require them to wear a wristband that states that they're over 21 years old. That way, any of the employees that notice somebody with a drink without that wristband would be able to address them. But that patio would have a fenced-in area around it, limited access to go in and out, so...
This bar is going to be open at certain times, it's going to be open all the time.
The upstairs bar, the inside bar, would be open for special events. The Building B bar, where the new water park's being expanded, would be open during the hours of the park. Anything else?
No. Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I have a word?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Ruth Scoggins, 1410 Rosedale. As I understand, there are a lot of children at the amusement park. There's a school not too far from there. Even though the patrons in this bar would be required to keep their drinks in there, if they overdrink and go out, they can be a liability to our children. I'd like to think about that.
Thank you, Ms. Scoggins. Other comments or questions?
I'd just comment, they're very well-supervised, they have employees everywhere around that place, and they maintain a very high standard of their patriots, and I believe that they would take good control over it.
And this just needs a verbal?
Verbal. For me to issue a word.
I say yes.
I say yes.
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 Well...
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Eppsier.
No.
Four, five, one.
Thank you. Moving to our action required items. A, Bill Number 7896, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the 2016 fiscal year budget relative to the salary for the Executive Director for Downtown Popper Bluff Incorporated.
Make a motion for the first reading in context only?
Okay. In caption only, right?
Caption only, context, caption.
Motion has been...
Wrong word there, sorry.
Context is everything, right?
The motion has been made and seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7896. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Richardson.
Back to, an ordinance amending the 2016 fiscal year budget for the city of Popper Bluff relating to downtown of Popper Bluff, Inc.
Move for second reading in caption only?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7896. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance amending the 2016 fiscal year budget for the city of Popper Bluff relating to downtown of Popper Bluff, Inc.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7896. Roll call, please.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Eppsier.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill Number 7896 has been adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 7897, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a small entertainment venue in a CX-3 commercial mixed-use zone for Rosie's Fashions Center Stage located at 325 Vine Street.
Move for first reading in caption only?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading in caption only of Bill Number 7897. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the operation of a small entertainment venue at 325 Vine Street, Popper Bluff.
Move for second reading in caption only?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for a second reading in caption only of Bill Number 7897. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the operation of a small entertainment venue at 325 Vine Street, Popper Bluff.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7897. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Eppsier.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
All righty, Bill Number 7897 has been adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 7898, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the city of Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances, Chapter 215, entitled nuisances and including a section relative to licensing of lawn care services.
Mr. West, does he have some comment?
We ought to read it twice, and then we can have comments, so...
Okay. Move for first reading in the caption only, Bill Number 7898.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading in caption only of Bill Number 7898. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Mr. West, name and address, please.
No. Mark needs to read it.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, Greg. An ordinance amending the Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances, Chapter 215, entitled nuisances and including a section relative to licensing of lawn care services.
Okay, can be discussed now.
We have to do it.
We need one more reading.
Move for second reading, caption only?
Second.
Motion's been made for a second reading, caption only of Bill Number 7898. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance amending the Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances, Chapter 215, entitled nuisances and including a section relative to licensing of lawn care services.
Now, Mr. West.
There you go, Greg.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Greg West at 1184 County Road 476. Hey, I just wanted to thank Butler County Landlord Association of the, what I counted, 34 people, citizens attending, 19 are from the Landlord Association. So, Landlord Association has a very vested interest in our community for things to be cleaned up and to be improved. Carefully correct me if I'm wrong, but the Landlord Association represents 100, or 1,600 units and approximately $90 million of property in Popper Bluff and Butler County. So we have a very vested interest in our city to see it grow, prosper, and be cleaned up. We are here because we have an interest in this ordinance, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm not familiar with caption or context or however you do it, but I'd like to hear what it's, what you're adopting properly.
I'll just go through the changes that I had recommended to council. Last meeting, I recommended seven-inch grass, taking that back to the original 12 that we had. I think if we did seven-inch grass, we'd drive through town right now because of the spring weeds and probably give 70% of the people a ticket, maybe, but under the different items that can be written up against, it said parts of derelict cars, I added derelict cars or trucks, to include derelict cars or trucks. Let's see. And there's several places in here where it says city planner, or his or her designee. I changed that to city managers, or his or her designee. On the order of removal on the violation, it says order of removal of abatement of such condition not less than seven days from the date of receipt of such notices. Well, first of all, we don't know when the person receives the notice. I changed that to 10 days from the date of notice, so whenever the date's written on the notice, they have 10 days after that. And I think most people, anybody that's familiar with code enforcement, if they happen to get that just a few days before and they need an extra time, I think code enforcement tries to work with those people as much as they can. So that was one change. Then down at the bottom, I know last time we talked about liens, actually, liens on the property has been in this ordinance for I don't know how many years, a lot of years. The only thing I changed is shall be certified to the, right now it says city clerk, and I put city collector, and it says who shall cause the cost, certified costs to be included, and I put who may cause certified costs, that kind of gives us a little leeway. I actually added, cost of such removals shall be calculated in the actual time and hourly rate of personnel, but in no case shall be less than $75. The reason that is if we have to go in and mow grass or take care of trash, if we don't put a minimum on there, I don't want people to think that the city's going to go around and mow their grass all the time for them, so... And also added this portion, if a nuisance is repeated in the same calendar year on the same property in violation of this section, the code enforcement officer or other city official designated may, without further notification, cause the nuisance removed, and the cost of same shall be billed in the manner described herein. You know, right now, if we write a notice on a certain address, and we go in and mow the grass, and then another three, four weeks later, it's up again, right now they're required to go in and write another notice, this works, it's already been notified once, then we could just go ahead and mow it, we wouldn't have to issue another violation. And I took that from, actually, that came out of Hannibal, Missouri, that's what they did in their section. Other than that, that's all the changes I had in there.
Okay. The... The, from what I've seen around our city, and I think this is, would be the mindset of our association, is grass isn't as much a problem for our city as the trash or derelict vehicles or just the neglect of what we've seen. So I think this is a step in the right direction and I appreciate the fact that Mr. Massingham did take the time to speak with several of the members of the Landlord Association and get our point of view and interest. So just want to thank you and know that clear understanding what it is, I think that that sounds good to us.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Move for adoption of Bill Number 7898?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7898. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Abshire?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill Number 7898 has been adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 7899. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one between the city of Popper Bluff and Schultz Surveying and Engineering Incorporated relative to engineering services for project STP 5100-009 for the paving of various city streets.
Move for first reading in caption only?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading in caption only of Bill Number 7899. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one between the city of Popper Bluff and Schultz Surveying and Engineering, Inc., relating to engineering services for project STP 5100-9 for the paving of various city streets.
Move for second reading of Bill Number 7899 by caption only?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for a second reading in caption only of Bill Number 7899. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one between the city of Popper Bluff and Schultz Engineering and Surveying Services, Inc., relating to engineering services for project STP 5100-9 for the paving of various city streets.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7899. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Abshire?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill Number 7899 has been adopted. I have been informed that that is not necessary for the closed meeting, so we will move to the city manager's report. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, just a couple of events that are coming up in the city. April 16th, at the Blackover Coliseum is the Scotty Mercury concert. Also on April 16th, the Popper Bluff Museum, which is the former Old Mart Twain School, is having a fundraiser for the museum. It's a roaring twenties gala to honor Sam Gambaluki. Also, on April 23rd is Buff Up the Bluff. And just to inform the public and the council, the two new fire trucks that we ordered probably a year ago or so are going through final inspections and should be delivered to the fire department in the next two to three weeks. And that's all I have.
One thing I got, Wednesday Buffalo Wild Wings is having a thing that 10% of all the bill goes to the Boys and Girls Club. If you tell them that you're there for the Boys and Girls Club or have a coupon for the Boys and Girls Club. So if you go Wednesday, try to stop by and get you some wings and help out the Boys and Girls Club.
What date is that?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday. Thank you. Anything else to come before the council?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and this meeting is adjourned.